Okay, thanks for coming everybody, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out tonight, we'll start with number one, approve the agenda, make any additions, to leave corrections. I've got two right off the top of my head here, one, we're gonna remove item K1, under Personnel, Chief is gonna come back with a different request next meeting, and we need to add I3, which is left service territory agreement, that's more of this technicality, it was approved back in 2015, and we just finally got the, you know, here up on there so, so add I3 and remove K1. Do you say anything else?
No.
The end?
No.
Good. Alright, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the same sign, motion carries unanimously. On the consent agenda, number two, consent agendas in your packet. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'm good.
Alright, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Doug, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the same sign. Motion carries unanimously Linda. First up here, visitors of the council, Mike, who are first to sign.
Good evening. About a year ago, council recall, they hired us to prepare a capital improvement plan for the city, as part of that, we agreed to provide periodic free updates, and staff contacted me this year and said, can we have one of those updates? Absolutely. So recently, I met with staff, we worked on the model, and then we're here tonight to present it to you. I was asked to provide an accelerated view of this, normally, they said, how long do you need? I said, this can go two hours, they said, oh no, it's not gonna be two hours. So I'm gonna compress this into minutes, and then, and then council can dictate however long, I've got all night, or however short amount of time that you wanna spend on it, okay?
Appreciate that.
So, alright. Okay, just real briefly, while we do everything graphically, and I know this is very difficult to read due to the size, but just to remind council, the way this works, each one of these columns represents a different project or purchase. We plug in the cost, the year, is it through, funded with bonds, or is it cash, or maybe to blend the both? If there is cash, which fund are we gonna take it from? Dump load, if you can't see it, if there is bond involved, what revenue streams, taxes, sewer, water, assessments, whatever. The top half has to do with assumptions, how fast is tax base gonna grow, how many new homes per year, and that sort of thing? But everything else that we do is gonna be done graphically. So what I'm gonna do is just whip through the slides, showing you where we're headed without any new projects, let's just take what we got today, just pay for what we got, not add anything new. This is the tax rate page, the yellow represents that portion of your tax rate associated with debt, what you're levying for bonds, and the green is basically everything else, so it's called basically operations. Now you'll notice the green on the tax rate is slightly increasing, that's because we are taking a pessimistic view, we're taking the view that spending will outpace tax base, which is exactly opposite of what actually has happened. Council actually held its levy flat going into this year, and tax base grew a tremendous amount, and that's why from seventeen to eighteen, you saw your tax rate drop, okay? That doesn't necessarily mean people's taxes went down, because if their values went up, it was offset by that. But you see this black line, that was our threshold in the past of planning new projects, was to use that, but staff and I met, and we said, well gosh, isn't this the new threshold? So when we line up new projects and purchases, the idea is to take advantage of the space here, you know, before, we were way up there. Okay, water, you've had some small increases in your water bill, you see it at about twenty-five dollars a month for an average user of five thousand gallons a month, that'd be a family of four, showering every day, watering the garden. And the inset graph projects the reserves in the water fund, and so right now, the water fund is performing without adding new projects, but you can see in the long run, as operational costs continue to increase, eventually, something's gonna have to go there.
Mike, can I say?
Yep.
My eyes are terrible, so legend on the bottom of the graph, how, is that years? How far out does it go?
Two thousand thirty.
Okay, so it shows that the fund balance is getting to us late two thousand plus.
Yeah, it's saying kinda flattish.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And then, here's the sewer fund, we've had some increases here, going into seventeen, and we're projecting fairly flat, the reason the cash drops so dramatically there is because of all the money you had from the wastewater plant funding, and of course, you spend it. And then, about two thousand and twenty-one, you have some existing sewer debt, that you're paying about five hundred grand a year, that ends. So that five hundred grand a year, see how the sewer rates goes pew, or the cash goes pew, that's a technical term. Where do I find that? And then here's your storm water fund, the size will increase going into seventeen, and you can see the cash has improved dramatically as a result, again, we've not added any new projects. Debt per capita, this is taking all your general obligation debt, we're not including any non-general obligation debt, but I'm not sure that you really have anything that's non-GO, simply divided by your population, and you can see it's being paid off fairly quickly, moderately high. The only time I get overly concerned about debt is when you start to exceed into here, alright, so if we can kinda keep it right where it is, no worries. And then your stabilization fund, but this is the one that the public generally is most interested in, what we look at is a typical home that increases in value some percentage, that uses five thousand gallons of water a month, at the end of the year, they're gonna pay so much in taxes, so much in sewer, and so much in water, how much more per month will it cost them in a future year compared to what they paid in sixteen? So, for instance, in seventeen, they will have paid, well, it's fifty dollars, so it's probably about twenty dollars more a month than what they did in sixteen. But you can see in eighteen, the cost, actually might have dropped some, and that's because you guys held the levy flat, remember? So, but long term, what we've done is we've added, whatever this total added up to, we added three percent a year as a possible reasonable cost increase for services, and you can see you're well below that. So when we look at your tax rate page, and your utility reserves, and your debt per capita, what we're looking at is those gaps, as where we put in new projects to try and stay under certain thresholds, does that make sense? So as we look at, for instance, your debt per capita, if we were to say, that's kind of our, our threshold, then, you know, we wanna wait till we get out here, to before we take on projects and so forth. So, now usually, this takes forever, because I usually walk the council through each project in detail, I'm just gonna plug them all in and show you the results, I'll just read them out what they are as I'm plugging them in. In two thousand and twenty-three, a water tower project for a million dollars, and it builds in inflation, so by then, it'll be one point two seven million. In two thousand and twenty-one, four million dollar phase-two wastewater project, by then it'll be four point six million. Two thousand and nineteen, East Main Storm Project, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, paid before with cash. Two thousand and nineteen, also, two thousand and seventeen, project carryover, I'm gonna be completed by that by then. Right, but I, oh, this is the one where you have authorized, using internal funds, to pay off the remaining costs of that project, and that you were gonna repay that over time, and that would start hitting in the nineteen budget, right Nancy?
Yep.
That's why we did it with nineteen. Okay. In two thousand and twenty-one, Highway fifty-seven, four million dollar project, with two point four million coming from a variety of grants and municipal state aid money?
Which one, Highway fifty-seven, that's what the states pay, their portion.
That's all state money?
That's all.
Okay. But that would result in two point two million being funded by the city. In two thousand and twenty-three, three million dollar project, Sixteenth Street Northwest and Backage Road to Highway fifty-seven, three million increasing to three point eight by that time. Two thousand and twenty-seven, First and Second Avenue Northwest, four million project, by then will be six point two million. Two thousand and nineteen, a cash project, Sixteenth Street Northeast, and grant, that's actually, I think, a two million dollar project, is that the one where you're getting grant money for the other half?
Well, just splitting into two.
Oh, I did.
Some from MSAS and the other grant that's granted to.
That's right, I did, you see this purple one, that's municipal state aid. And then in two thousand and eighteen, that's the only thing for this year, I have, you had some purchases planned out of your stabilization fund, and Sixteenth Street Northeast, hundred and fifty grand in cash, and then in two thousand and eighteen, oh, there were some remaining funds in your sewer fund to finish off the plant in eighteen, so I had to take that into account as well. So, what's the impact of all of that? So you see the red in the tax rate, we're trying to stay, keep those projects all under the new threshold there, that you've set. Now you see the water fund doesn't survive that without adjustment, so let me go back to my input page. And if we were to do a three percent annual increase in water rates, it saves the fund. No adjustments, oh wait, and storm, probably something minor. Not even sure you need to do anything at this point. And then sewer, you see, long term, has an issue, so we had a one percent a year increase in sewer. So with those changes, there's your tax rate, the water bill, you know, twelve years from now, goes up to just over thirty bucks a month from, you know, twenty-five. And there's your sewer bill, storm, debt per capita, see how we keep under the, keep it kind of at the high point, move over it. And then there's that cost per month increase on that typical house, and to give you an idea of what's typical house, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the compressed version of this, I flew through that. But the idea was, I think a lot of those projects have already been discussed with the council, so what we tried to do with, with staff was to schedule them and size them to meet those various thresholds.
Do you have assumptions, and therefore, added tax base each year, and number of residences?
Very little, very little, in fact, I was harped on for the fact that I only have two new homes a year being built, as opposed to the twenty-something or fifty-something that you are doing, and I have your tax base growing slower than your operational spending, which exactly, right now, is the opposite. And, and the reason I do that, is I've seen cities, just let me illustrate quickly.
No, I'm glad you did that.
No, that, I think that's a real good way, we're staying in bounds without growth, so...
Right, if the growth is there, we get the, we get the benefit of the growth.
Because there's always gonna be projects that have to be taken care of, you know?
Because if I show growth, you know, and it's going gangbusters, we're gonna spend the money.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure we weren't showing fifty dollars a year for...
This way, if we have growth, it's gonna be gravy.
Yep.
And then my own as well, okay. So, is there any thoughts, concerns, criticisms, questions? No, I like that.
Well, it looks like we're in a two and a half percent increase, you know, kinda throughout the next fifteen, eighteen years, you know, I think that's just the end of all.
That, that's overall cost, so, you know, your levy might go up more than that, and then your utility rates might go up less, but the overall cost of services should fall within that three percent range.
Thank you, I'm glad that the conservative route was, what I was hoping to, again, you could adjust that however you wanted, Brad, I know you're doing the book, 'cause my eyes would never be able to see that.
But thank you for the thought.
But will you have print copies now?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Nancy said I should have brought print copies tonight, maybe I should have, but I never know if you're gonna make lots of changes, so the idea is to get a consensus of the council, and then I PDF, I'll do both the with and without projects, so you can see the before and after, you know, I was just gonna ask.
Perfect, and then your assumptions will be on there too.
Yeah.
Alright, good, that's, that's good for me, thank you for the update, I appreciate it.
That's a record for me. Thank you.
We'll help you break records. Drive safe on your way home. Glad you could come down.
Well, it usually takes me ten minutes just to say hello, so.
We're helping you out. Okay, on to the next here, public forum, we have one male, Tal McCart, they haven't turned in yet. Okay, Janine and Alyssa?
Yes.
Yep, if I just come up and speak to name and address, that'd be perfect.
Janine Hensley, I live at one oh one North Vanderbilt, I'm also the owner of misplaced magnolia at one eleven West Main.
My name's Alyssa Toyer, I'm a resident of Dodge County, but I'm the manager of Anytime Fitness here in town at one ten West Main.
We are here in hopes to get guidance, and then eventually permission, to shut down two blocks of Main Street, the third Saturday in September, so not Labor Day weekend, not the weekend after when Marigold Days happen, but the weekend following that, to have kind of a Main Street block party, customer appreciation type of event, the, the plan is, is gonna be called Cue the Cars and Guitars, classic cars, classic rock, and barbecue. Our goal is to have everyone on Main Street participate, if it is a success, we hope to turn it into an annual event. Hopefully, the other restaurants on Main Street as well, if they buy in, our goal is for everyone to do some type of barbecue, and non-competitive barbecue, so whatever I do, Legion can do a different type of barbecue, perhaps Jimmy's Pizza can do barbecue pizzas, perhaps the Chinese restaurant can do some type of an Asian barbecue. Then we have Live Music all day long on Saturday, of course, until ten o'clock, when we have to be quiet, and, and then we, I've actually already contacted a few, and I'm talking to others, having some, a, a small car show on those two blocks that we have hoped to block off. We also hope to invite all of the nonprofits in town to come out, and possibly, if we can find a location there on Main Street to set up, have booths for fun activities for the families, for the kids, it has been already compared to Christmas in Canton, but the fall edition, not so cold, and after everyone's done with their vacations, and their summers, and they're back in town, on a Saturday when football won't be an issue, hopefully, we can get good attendance. We didn't want to start contacting everyone on Main Street and getting buy-in until we could make sure that it was possible to block off the two blocks that we needed to block off to make it happen, and that's what we're here to do. One more thing I'd like to add, our goal is, as everyone who is selling a service, we are going to request that they donate five percent of their proceeds, and our first year goal is to hopefully, find a location near the intersection of Main Street and fifty-seven, where we can put a marquee type sign that would feature all of the businesses on Main Street. There's really nowhere for us to put any signage there, and everyone drives right on by, and kinda bring some focus back to Main Street to let everyone know what's available to them right here in Canton. If we achieve that goal, then, and it, and we are successful, and it becomes an annual event, we would like to then turn it into some type of a scholarship program for one of our comic students.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
Kinda how it's gonna work is, we aren't gonna be able to give you permission tonight.
We know that.
So, what I'll do is direct you back to work with Teresa, and then she'll get, you know, the police chief will have to be consulted, and for as far as rural voters, public works, public works, that type of thing, so there'll be some stuff, you have to do, get everybody's blessing, and bring back the details to a future meeting, and then we can, and that will give the public a chance to...
We do expect to have Chamber buy-in, I spoke with the board, Chamber Board today, and I'll be speaking to all of the members at the next board meeting in a couple of weeks in July, and then we're going to start knocking on doors, sending out emails, and seeing if we can get the majority of the Main Street businesses to participate.
I think that'd be the key, the more people you get to deposit, and then come back, then we hope there will be some good public chance to come in.
Which two blocks are you... Not the first block, and, and this was on the suggestion of someone on the board of the Chamber, who had done an event similar to this years ago. Everyone needs to be able to turn left, otherwise, they're not gonna know what to do, they're not gonna know where to park, and this will give them access to that free parking by the liquor store in that city lot. So the second block, the second west block, the one between her and, and me, and then the next block, so basically, from...
From one hundred and two hundred.
Correct, yeah.
I was thinking it had to be council, unless you could build it to the liquor store.
So I'll just suggest you get with Teresa, get your stuff together, and get a list of what she needs to do, then you can get back, and then we'll take it up to a future meeting.
Yep, alright, perfect.
Thanks for...
Alright, can I give you a call tomorrow morning? Uh, no. That's fine. That's fine. No, um, but I have your, I have a card on, of yours on my desk, so I will give you a call when I have availability, okay? Are there any, just real quick, are there any roadblocks that you could see that would prevent us from being able to do this?
I know it used to be done in the past.
Yeah, we, John Christian's had a car show there, was it four years ago, had the old fifties car show for...
He's the one who gave me the advice of not walk the first block.
You got your eyes and crashed your teeth, and we don't have any public street dances out there for years. And we just have the festival street dance there for twelve fifteen, twenty years, so...
Myself, I like to see something down the town.
Yeah, I think, whether people are gonna wanna see something down there, but just get the buy-in from the people.
Crazy days, you gotta diet off, diet off your block for crazy days.
Yeah, yeah.
What kind of barbecue would you have?
I'm gonna be going to a football game. Saturdays this year instead of Fridays, so when you said those are for football, I'm like, wow.
Oh, I was wrong, okay.
No, but it's, I think it's great to try to get something organized on Main Street, we've been, people ask about that, in fact, in the conference, we had our feedbacks, and the meeting, people said we need to add more activities on the town.
I was a special events coordinator for the Army in Germany for like, five years, this is right up my alley, so we really wanna do it right and do it big, start off small, get all the keys worked out, and then go for it.
Thank you very much for doing that, appreciate it, have a good night.
I'm not gonna be rude, but I left my husband alone at the restaurant, I'm gonna go make sure you're okay. It happens all the time, thank you everyone.
Okay, on to old business, number one, All Systems, quote alternative.
I'll just let Lynn to tell you what she found out.
We discussed this briefly at the last meeting, there was some stuff that was left here, so, okay?
Put it back in your packet for the quote that Toyer had gotten, but after the meeting, as I was doing the minutes, and I had a split screen on my computer back there, I'm thinking, why can't I do that here? So I called All Systems, they walked me through how to put it on my tablet, so I've actually got it on here, and there is a red light down here showing that it's on, so I can have a split screen and watch it the entire time we're here, this didn't cost anything, they just walked me through on the phone how to download it onto my tablet, and we can have it. It is up to you, this is just an alternative, that's free, if you still want the light, you can go ahead with your discussion on that, but I just wanted to let you know that...
That must be the IBMS system?
Don't ask me, I don't know.
So you have a way to know that it's recorded, right now?
Yeah, I can tell, it's got a little red light, like it does back in the, back in the other room, so I'm actually mirroring that screen that's back there, and I've got it then up on here all the time, so I can see, if that red light goes off, then something went wrong.
Timeout.
Right. And then I should be able to figure out, like, when I shut it off, and turn it back up for close or unrecorded meetings.
That should be nice.
Yeah, you'll be able to see that it's on and off here too. So, that would just know where it is.
I guess whoever's running the meeting would need, you know...
Does that make sense, to give that try for a while?
Yeah.
Is it...
We can see that it's recording.
Is it only your screen that has that capability, or...
If you wanted it on your screen?
Yeah.
If your computer is...
It'll work on, it'll work on smartphones, 'cause I have the shop cameras on my phone.
If your computer would be compatible with their system, I, they, you could call them, and, and I could give you who to talk to, but he would be able to then direct you, like he did me, just walking through how to download it onto yours, and, yeah.
If you want to shoot me that name?
Sure, sure.
Great, great.
Give that a try for a while, see if we have any issues with that, and then if we have issues with that, then we can explore, fix more. Alright, good, thanks Linda, appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, number two, balance of South Vanderbilt Avenue Project, hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and three dollars and four cents.
Right, so this is the balance left after the, all of the petition and waiver agreements were signed. And I spelled out a couple of options for you, so one thing we had talked about is that the city owns the property to the west that could potentially benefit from that improvement in the future, if there were to be development, that twenty-five acres, we could attach an assessment to that twenty-five acres, and collect that at the time that it's developed, that's one option. We can pay the balance from the general fund reserve, that won't put you in a position where you have less than six months, so you'll still have plenty of reserves in your general fund, and you can just pay cash for the remainder of the project essentially. You can utilize the Fund 401, so the city does have a permanent improvement revolving fund, which in the past has been paid back as developments happen, so if a road was built, and...
I'm sorry, do we have this?
Yeah, I, it's under I.
Oh, I, I knew I saw somewhere.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I had a look, and it wasn't F2, so then I kept looking.
It's the agenda summary under I, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Cause I knew I read it, and then...
Okay, alright, got it.
Okay, okay. And cover the balance with that, it wouldn't necessarily get paid back in any way, but there are funds there that could cover that, hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and it was essentially a permanent improvement. And then, we could borrow the funds to cover the balance, and then pay it back out of... All utilities, or just street? Just street.
Yeah, the balance for street, so it would affect...
Like their future levy on street, so you could levy enough to pay back the one eighty-nine.
So if we, option one, a tacit balance, the hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-five acre home, and make collective fund future development, we'd still have to borrow those dollars to pay for it?
Right now, the whole project would be paid out of 401, the fund 401, and normally, that helps pay back with all of the petitions and waivers, but in this case, it wasn't due to that balance, so that's why we're...
So it's already been paid?
It's already been.
Okay, alright.
So do you just wanna leave it paid, or do you wanna be able to recover it in the future? Do you want to put money back in your permanent improvement revolving fund from the general fund, so there are several ways to go? Do you want the street to pay for it over the long term?
What's our balance in Fund 401 right now?
Around a millionish. The, the question is, we don't usually do that, like even if the city owns a portion of a project, the city pays that fund back, so we can lend it out, there is one time, at least in the last eleven years, where council made a motion to use some of the funds that it built up, and that was for the public works portion of, the public works building, the streets portion of public works building. So we don't normally use it to actually pay for our projects, it pays for all of the projects, but then it's all reimbursed, so that's kinda why that question is up there. So that's kind of why that question is up there.
If they have a preference, I know what my preference would be.
Well, my preference would be to reimburse it, too.
Right. And I'm looking at number one, as far as attaching it to the 25 acres. I don't think we need to borrow the funds.
Right.
To cover the balance, I don't think we need to incur any borrowing costs of 25 acres. It's just an entry, we'll keep the entry until something happens, if it's already paid for.
And should we track it for that, so that when the time comes, we make sure we're getting it back?
Right, right.
So kind of a defer of the session.
That would be one. I don't know why you need any general fund reserves for that. So if it's attached to the 25 acres, so the city sells 25, sells 25 acres?
Well, the sale would pay back the $189,000.
If you don't get the $189,000, 25 acres?
I think we did the math, and it wasn't too wild.
That'd be about $7,000.
Divided by three houses per acre, that's $2500 or something per lot.
What, do we push then with also 25 acres? That's possibly, that got the retention pond in it?
It will have the retention pond.
Okay, so our value went down. And we don't get the, we get $100,000, probably $89,000 pulled around out there, where we push that to? Do we split it? We can do a combination of anything, can't we?
You, totally up to you.
Where'd white go already here?
And you know what? Here's, you know what? Here's the other thing. You don't have to decide tonight.
Right. Because it's already paid for, is something we can look at.
So can we, so as far as the general fund balance, the reserves and that type of thing, as we go through the budget for 2019, we're gonna get updated numbers on that, correct? As we know, we expect...
Yeah.
So should we make the decision when we do the budget for 19? As we're doing the budget process, then decide what we're gonna do with this? Not just part of the bu- budget itself, but to know what our general fund reserves are gonna be and that type of thing before we say, hey, let's use 50 grand from reserves, but maybe there's something else that...
Right. Before we spend.
Right.
Yeah, I like Coy's idea there of splitting it somehow, because that is a lot to leave towards that one project, you know, to recoup.
That's those 25 acres, not counting the retention pond, but that's 25 acres.
Yeah, I think it's the 25 acres, but then you can argue the fact that the pond's already there, you know, you could P U V it, you know, do a PUD, have homes less than three per acre, you could, you know, there are other things, and the pond's already there, so it's sort of an advantage for the developer more than a hindrance for the developer. But, yeah, you can do it however you want, whenever you want.
Let's look at our fund balances as we go through the budget process. We have our four options here, and we can decide what combination or one...
Right, right.
So we can get something on the books for Nancy to carry forward, so we do know what we're supposed to get in the future. Okay, thank you.
Or we might come up with an option five.
Or there might be another option. Yeah, exactly. Number three, under Old Business, SNCAC agreement, the central air replacement, $3,600.
Yes, so we did change our agreement with SNCAC a little bit. We weren't spending all of the funds that we had available through the conservation improvement program, our electric utilities conservation improvement program. Folks had replaced the refrigerators, you know, we'd kind of gotten to the point, well, what are we gonna do for, for the folks, low-income homeowners? So we had added some weatherization type of items to that list, one of them being central air conditioner units up to $3,000, and it turns out that central air conditioner units are coming in closer to $3,600 for replacement. So SNCAC has asked if we would be willing to modify our agreement, that was approved earlier this year, and allow $3,600 per central air unit.
Comments or questions for Theresa on that? This is all money that will be allocated to SNCAC for that program. It has to be used for...
Well, we allocate it for them to use. We hope that they use as much of it as possible.
Right.
And, and they're just coming up against those roadblocks.
Their amount, it's more than what it's coming out, that's spoke to be allowed for that, right? That's the only...
Yeah, we, when we signed our agreement, we said up to $3,000, and they can't get a quote back at $3,000.
No, I think it's a good program. I can't see why we'd say no to it.
All right. I'll obtain a motion to amend the agreement with SNCAC?
I'll make that motion.
Next up, about a second. Oh, sorry. Next point, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries unanimously. Move on to I, the administrators' report.
Okay. So comprehensive plan next up. The reason I'm bringing back the community-wide brand is I just happened to sit in on a library board meeting where the friends of the library said, oh, we were looking at doing some new stationery, we were thinking about what the logo would look like. The recommendation was, well, how will it coordinate with what a library's logo is? And I thought, well, how does that coordinate with, like, the brand Citywide, which also happens to be one of the items that we talked about adding to the comprehensive plan when Brad was here. So it is a comprehensive plan item to take a community, evolve the community vision to community-wide brand. The library, the friends of the library had approached Abby Bradford, so that was the person that I reached out to. I can certainly get other quotes. I have actually reached out to at least two other firms to ask them for quotes for providing the service. That also then plays into wayfinding signage, which we just heard Janine talk about, how there's a desire to have some signage for downtown. So we would just have kind of a bigger presence and overall brand or theme for the city that we could apply to, to all those different areas. So we will take it to the EDA and see if that's something, I think actually, two of those, 5.2 and 7.2, were both EDA and parks-appointed projects. So the idea is to present this to the EDA on July 10th, and then bring it back to the council on July 26th. So if it, if it sounds, if there's maybe a consensus, that's where you'd like to start with your comp plan, or if there's another action item you'd rather grab on to, let me know.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
What? It's been made in back.
Okay, we'll take it to EDA and...
See what's going on.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, and then the next thing was a project for future camps. So you had approved future camp for me this year in August, and I had thought, well, once we have our comp plan together, we could pick something from there that I can take to camp and flush it out. This is just throwing something out there. I'm certainly open to what piques your interest. 5.4 was provide a forum to align and connect community members, strengths, skills, passions, and assets. That seems like a challenge to me, or a project to me, something that I could take and work through there and over the next six months about how to have an effective forum that would move us on to the second part of that, which would be the appropriate implementation of the project. But again, that's in August, and certainly open between now and then to other ideas that you feel might be more important to tackle, or projects or challenges from the comp plan that are more important to that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. We'll let you know at the next meeting.
And then I, I included the budgeted truck box and crane that is off of the state bid. Those are items that were budgeted for. So for information, for your information.
This is going on an existing truck?
Exactly.
I thought it...
Yep, yep. Wastewater truck, water wastewater pickup truck.
And this is the only place we can't buy it from, right?
Well, it's already gone, it's essentially already gone out for bid, so this is the best price that the state received for that, for those particular items.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Theresa on that? Thank you. And then the electric service territory?
Yeah, well, this started like in December of 2015, and so I'm proud of it. But we are down to the point of actually putting an agreement together and getting that over to MPUC for them, for their consideration. So we would take over service by exception, which includes the high school. The cost of the facilities is just a little more than $43,000. When we started, it was a 72, so that'll tell you what the kind of work stuff we've been doing over a year and a half. And then we actually will add to the high school, the football field. So we'll be obtaining territory from XL Energy, that's the $448, I think. So we will serve their entire property then.
All the school campuses will be city?
City, right.
That's just now an option.
Yeah, yeah. And the high school was in our service territory, it's just when the boundary lines were all identified, it was not possible to start serving them right away, and a service by exception agreement was put in place.
Listen, bring that up and send that back to the community rep.
No, it's because by resolution on December 15th, the council had already approved taking over service of these service by exception areas. So we've just been working through the details of how to do that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Donna. All right, Donna to Jay, the engineers' report, number one, 2018 pavement concrete.
Um, we had, uh, yeah, you're right. Sorry.
Sure. Never know, I might miss something. All right, thank you, Mary Ann.
Sorry, you are correct.
Two items tonight, they should be pretty quick. They're ultimately just gonna round out our budgeted street maintenance items. So we'll start with the first one, that's a change order to basically add on additional work, in this case, a mill and overlay on Fifth Avenue Northeast from First Street up to Third Street, that's kind of rounding out that area there, that's in need of some pavement rehabilitation. So the contractor's held his unit prices there, so we're just gonna add on to that project to, again, round out our budgeted street maintenance project. So happy to answer any questions you may have, and hopefully looking for a motion from the council to approve that change order tonight.
Oh, so it's adding that block on half.
Block and a half.
Perfect. Which really needs...
Yeah, we're trying to get the heavier travel areas in northeast mill and overlays.
I'd rather, where I keep thinking, okay, when I cross Third, it's gonna stop, and it's gonna be, I'm probably able to get that done. I'll obtain a motion to approve the change order.
I'll make that.
Thanks, Bonnie. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes unanimously.
All right, the second item is a resolution to consider awarding a contract to 2018 chip ceiling quotes. That's where we're not doing a mill and overlay, we're just putting oil down and putting some chips on the road, and then sweeping them off in a couple of weeks. In the resolution, see, we solicited quotes, we see three quotes from different contractors, recommending the council approve this resolution, enter a contract with Pearson Brothers for a shade over $68,000. And again, this is part of the budgeted street maintenance items. Yeah, ask for your consideration of the resolution, and bring in any questions you may have.
Is this the same person that did last year's?
Uh, no, it's a different contractor.
Can maybe conversation be had as far as when they're cleaning that up?
Yeah, we'll try to do a better job.
Remember that last year?
Difficult.
I don't, I, the one, a couple houses had it all the way up all to their garage doors and front porches, and it was, there was...
We may have missed that block.
There were chips all over their house.
Moved a little too far when they swept?
Uh, just a little, a little aggressive, maybe.
So it's a different, different company that we've used and had good success with.
Okay, all right.
I think you ought to stay on and do a better job.
You do a real good job.
Good. I'll obtain a motion to approve the bid.
I'll make that motion.
Start for a second.
I'll second it.
Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And that is it.
Thanks, Brandon. Appreciate it. K1 removed, K2 water wastewater operator.
Yeah, so we have not been receiving applications for the water wastewater Q position that we reposted. And after a conversation with Charlie, he and I decided that something to do with that's the council to allow us to post the water wastewater position, which is one grade, a one grade lower than the water wastewater operator Q position. It also means that we would be looking for someone with D licenses, so again, it would be a matter of having folks work through the times and the testing to be able to get up to the level of the individual that we lost to with our water wastewater operator Q. But right now, that seems to be the way we need to proceed.
Okay, so going down a grade?
Right, repost the position as...
Less experienced?
Yeah, less experienced. And, and in response to the previous posting, I did receive two applications. We do, of course, need to go out to our current employees and give them the option to apply to the position, but I already had two applicants who shot up applications, even though they didn't qualify for water wastewater Q, but they would qualify for the water wastewater position, so we're in a better position there already.
Okay. Any questions for Theresa on that?
Nope.
I think it's...
Okay. Okay, we will go ahead and do that.
Thank you very much. Attorney, number one, voluntary reclamation.
Last Thursday, we received a request from one of our full-time police officers, Julio Baez, asking for the city to accept, he was, his retirement as of last Thursday, the 21st. So I would ask the city to make a motion to accept his retirement.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Start for a second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Terrence, you?
Number two, it appears as though there are two encroachments on a drainage, the city's drainage easement up on 12th Street Northwest, the 900 block. We are trying to work through how we're going to address those encroachments. It's my understanding that one of the properties is under a contract to be sold, so the situation will have to be addressed prior to that sale. At this point, we're not exactly sure how that needs to be addressed, so I would just wanted to make you aware of the situation and ask the council to just allow myself and staff to try and work through that with the...
Where's that?
12th Street Northwest?
Or, it may be 12th Avenue. It'd be 12th Avenue.
12th Avenue, I apologize.
12th Avenue, yeah. There's like, there's a 20-foot drainage easement between 901 and 903. It actually is the location of the storm sewer pipe. So we did check with the city engineer, he feels one house is two and a half feet into the easement, the other house is one and a half feet into the easement, which would leave us 16 feet. The engineer feels like that would still be sufficient room in the unlikely event that work would ever need to be done on that particular storm sewer line, so we just need to work out how to clear up the title for the two homeowners.
Okay, so you don't need the action from the sheriff, and you're just letting us know that there's a...
Correct.
All right, thank you. We are gonna now close the meeting to discuss a real estate purchase and offer and sources of funds. When we are done with the meeting, we'll open it back up. Thank you.
You want that on or off?
Melanie?
Recorded?
We are gonna record it.
So you're...
Okay.